Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Lewisville City Council Meeting, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is seven o'clock. We're going to go ahead with our public hearings on ordinance number twenty-three, day seventeen, and I'll ask you to please speak into your microphones when you speak.
Being an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement and execute all documents necessary with S E T Inc. for the nickel plate and East Main Street intersection improvements project.
Is there anyone here to speak on ordinance number twenty-three, day seventeen? Okay, let's move along to ordinance number twenty-three, dash eighteen.
Being an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Omni Pro Services for the construction management and inspection services for the nickel plate and East Main Street intersection improvements project.
Is there anyone here to speak on ordinance number twenty-three, eighteen? Okay, council, you have before you the meeting agenda, and I would ask them for a motion to approve.
Second.
Vote?
Taylor?
Yes.
Al Jansen?
Yes.
Fallon?
Yes.
Sloughford?
Yes.
Street?
Yes.
Would you bow your heads for a moment of silent prayer? Amen, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen, Lord.
Roll call.
Taylor?
Here.
Al Jansen?
Here.
Fallon?
Here.
Sloughford?
Here.
Street?
Here.
I have a certificate of an open meeting that the news media was notified of our meeting this evening. Uh, council members, you have before you the minutes of the April third, two thousand and twenty-three council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, they stand approved as presented. You also have in your pack at the mayor's court report of receipts and disbursements for the month ending March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Please accept them as presented. We will now move along to the financial report of receipts and disbursements for the month ending March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Sonya, please speak into the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. You'll see by your finance reports that we're up approximately a hundred and twenty thousand, which is fifty point eight percent, so pretty standard for this time of year. Um, a lot of it also has to still do with that Saul program that they were working on. So it's come down a little bit from last month, given the tax deadline. For this month, I would expect to see a substantial hike in that one. Um, on your next page, you'll see that our target percentage for the three years, twenty-five percent, and overall all funds, which is twenty-one point eight five percent for the current year appropriations. On the next page, you'll see your fund statement. In our general fund, we brought in one point six in revenue so far. We spent one point nine. We had outstanding encumbrances of one point one, with an uncovered fund balance of one point eight nine seven, and an overall fund balance of seven point nine million. If you go to your last page, you'll see your bank reconciliation. So the star interest rate for the month of March was four point eight seven. In February, it was four point seven six, and last March, it was point three six.
I was gonna say, it was really low last July. Sonya, with the, uh, income tax, uh, revenue that we're seeing, has there been anybody asked for extensions or anything to file?
Um, we're not really gonna see that too much until this month.
Okay.
So it would've been basically people coming up to the deadline in the last minute, stuff otherwise just all pretty ballsander. So you always have those who go on the center, just to tag me some over all day and night over.
Yeah, okay.
So on the side note, for me?
Sure.
I concluded the, this past year's article reporting, not that submitted today.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Council have any questions? For Sonya? Yep, okay. Okay, we'll go ahead with persons appearing before council. Um, Ronald Salisbury, please come forward, and you'll have your three minutes, Ronald.
Name's Ronald M. Salisbury, and I want you to pay particular attention to my address, forty-five sixty-one East Hunt Avenue, northeast Lewisville, Ohio. And the reason I say that was the post that said, "Some of us live three quarters of a mile away. Shouldn't be having interest." For as long as this city collects taxes on my house, I do have an interest. I do have an interest. Whenever they, though, there's talk of a, uh, Sheetz gas station, all of us have wells. It'll jeopardize our wells if that's put in. Two hundred apartments over there, four hundred more cars, you can't widen Peach. You put a s- a stop sign or a light there at the intersection, you might get on Peach, just like we don't get off of Broadway. You put in a market there, it's gonna be loaded up, and it's so close to Broadway, that it's gonna ruin our neighborhood. We can't get out now. We can't get out now. And the, and the sad part is, none of you have to live there. None of you have to deal with that. But we do down there. We have a community. We have children that run the streets, play. But you're gonna, you won't destroy your own neighborhoods, but you'll destroy ours. And I have a real problem with that. I moved here a long time ago, and it was quiet, and it was not houses all around me back down there, but you're collecting my taxes. I'm adamant against that, because the river does already make money. The only person that's gonna make money now is the guy building stuff and renting it, and we end up on the short end of the stick. Traffic, confusion. I mean, we're part of Lewisville, too. I don't, I don't wanna be left out. I mean, Metro parts got a whole big area built up there, but that won't happen, because you don't wanna destroy your own neighborhoods. But we ha- we will be destroyed. So I'm agitated with the whole thing. You jeopardize my well and the areas around it. How would you like to build a, right, right, setting a hundred feet from the back of your property, which is gonna be over there, on that area? So yeah, we have an interest, and if you don't want us to have an interest, give me back all my taxes I paid before the year, and I'll move on. But then, I have an interest, and so do the people that live in my neighborhood. You collect taxes from every one of them. It's wrong to destroy our neighborhood.
Thank you. Okay, Donna Fuller?
I first want you to know, I'm not just speaking for myself. I'm speaking for my neighbors and the people all around me. I want you to know an experience that I had. I had an appointment at the hospital, and I'm on the other side of sixty-two. You have your Peach. I'm trying to get across. I waited for five lights, and I'm beginning to think, how am I ever gonna get across there? They, I've asked you the last meeting that I was here. I'd like one of you to at least go over there and sit early in the morning. You gotta understand, you've got your buses, you've got all those people from that apartment coming out. They're going to wherever, and then you're sitting there. Clear back to Clay. You are sitting, and you're waiting, and you're waiting for five lights. What do you think it's gonna be like? You have now two hundred, they claim, homes here now. Each home there could have two cars. Okay, count that up, and then you're gonna fill that whole land there with more buildings and possibly two cars each. Go there, and I want one of you to at least be kind enough to go sit there. Sit there on a Sunday. Sit there in a, in between three and five, and tell me, do you get a little frustrated sitting there whenever you see that they're gonna build all these homes? They've flattened your homes up in there. You've got, now you'll have asphalt. You'll have water running off of buildings. Don't tell me that's not gonna be a water problem. I've lived with it. And I can tell you right now, we do have an interest in this, and it's a not a very good idea for you to keep building around us, flattening land, and throwing water on us, and making the traffic, so that you're gonna be late for wherever you go. And I advise those people to get up at four o'clock in the morning if they plan on getting to work by seven, whenever they're through with all these homes. And it's gonna turn into a section eight. Mind my words, you'll see. I may not live to see it, but you will, and you'll be sorry you did this. So please, one of you go up there and sit, and see how long it takes you to get across sixty-two, and then tell me it's not gonna be a traffic problem. We'll see.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Don Keefe?
Hello, my name's Don Keefe. I live at ninety-twenty Lewisville Street, um, and also a trustee for the township. I'm here more or less just to amplify everybody's concern, because I do live on the other side of the township, but I look at it as if it was my neighborhood. I can see the concerns, and I take that to heart, or I wouldn't be here this evening. The biggest thing I would like you five to do is take that to heart, too, if it was in, uh, in your backyard. I think that's an important thing to look at, is I don't wanna see doing things to other people that's working alongside yourself. That was all I wanted to say, and thanks for like three minutes. Thank you.
Casey Balderson?
Evening, guys. Casey Balderson, address five-five-seven-four Clover Street in Lewisville, Ohio. Um, not too far from the, uh, proposed property there, and, um, some, some things I wanna bring up is, I know we had much larger attendance at the last meeting, but I don't want the audience's lack of attendance today to be taken as their acceptance. Um, I'm sure there's a lot of people who are still very much against this, but they just can't keep up with the, the politics of it and have a hard time scheduling it into their lives. I know I'm actually missing my, some of my daughter's cheer stuff today to, to be able to come here, just to be able to represent people in my area. Um, as far as the, the development of this, I mean, if we're doing this for the residents of the township, they really don't want it, especially the residents in that area. And I think that's been made very clear. I really haven't seen, and perhaps you have, but I haven't seen anybody who's really all for this. Um, and if this is intended to be more benefit for the people of the city, then I would like to request that we reconsider doing something more along in the city, where there's already property available, um, to be able to maybe have those types of conversations. In the area where we're at and where this is being proposed, the people live in that area to try to stay away from the commotion of the city life, while still living close enough to be able to patronize the city and be able to help support the local school system and local business. And, and that's where a lot of us fall, myself included. The, uh, another concern that I've been hearing a lot of is the, the concerns about the flooding and the water management in that area. And while, you know, we already have a lot of our own water management issues, it, it appears that Lewisville itself as a whole has water management issues. I mean, we, we see that the tracks flooded, um, many times, and I mean, I, I will say that I, I don't believe that I've seen it flooded maybe in the last year or so, but I mean, that, I think the verdict's still out, that if we, a lot of people are still having issues in, in that area with the flooding, and they're kind of attributing it to the development that's already taking place over there. Moving on, the, and, and one of my biggest concerns, and I'm sure there's a lot of big concern of the rest of the people as well, is the, the, the type of people that we're going to be bringing into that area, if we're developed this into any type of shopping center, that's gonna create a lot more foot traffic across Broadway, and especially coming from the areas, uh, off Lush there. And it, it will introduce a lot more commotion, um, a lot more opportunity for crime, a lot more foot traffic, and that's something I'd like you guys to deeply consider for the people of the, that area. Um, we do already have occurrences of crime in that area. I mean, we're, it's, it's not like anybody's.
After three minutes.
So I, I just wanna close with that, and please consider that, that for the rest of the residents, um, as, and the foot traffic is a major concern of mine as well. Thank you.
Hey, this time I'll ask Chris Kurzian to come and speak. And since you had signed up previously, you will have five minutes, Chris.
Well, I've heard a lot tonight about what's going on, sold that I don't play or understand. Heard about a gas station. We have no gas station. Uh, we heard about flooding. There, when they get the first part of it, wouldn't sink, the flooding ceased some, second part it cut down. Uh, and what we have semi-proposed, we have three to four catch-up ponds that will stop it. Uh, so I think everything is ready to scale that more and more. Uh, it's a low-impact development. Uh, I see the lady say about the traffic. Everybody's coming, "You guys, the traffic, it's not a city issue with the traffic. The intersection's a county issue. It's not even a township issue." I mean, sixty-two, again, everybody's making these issues and these problems, and they have nothing to do with the city. You know, uh, we need a mayor. And I don't under- I really don't understand what's gonna happen. It's going to get developed if it's houses, or if we propose our, our change. Back in the day, the city brought all that land in for a redevelopment, for a reason. They needed our city to move out. If we don't move out, we're gonna get eaten up by candy, and then we will have no control. I mean, Amazon's already started to hire. They're gonna open. People are gonna come. Amazon came that way, they will come, you know, and Candy came that far. They're gonna come further. You know, we need to help ourselves. The other thing I don't understand, if I do half of what I want, we'll have over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax on the new schools. If it goes to the full extent, we're gonna have over half a million. Everybody complains about levies, and our schools going up to what they cost. The only way to reduce our burden, the schools, is to either go get industry or worship property. Residents can't afford to do that. It just doesn't work.
We're doing it now.
Excuse me, let him speak.
I mean, I don't, I think it's nice. I mean, we have senior housing. We have, uh, a low-impact strips, you know, with the menus, nothing else. Hopefully a eatery, uh, a banking institution, you know, insurance company, things like that. And that's actually less traffic, like, like the lady said, than having two cars per house. So we're actually reducing it by making it commercial than we are as if it goes.
Excuse me?
But other than that, I mean, I proposed it. Uh, we've had plans for everybody to look at, you know, what we proposed. You guys seen they were available to people. I've contacted people. I've contacted, uh, the guy who's putting in two hundred and sixty-eight homes. We spoke, spoke a few times. You know, he's excited about it. It's gonna increase the value to them homes, and if it increases the value of them homes, we're gonna get better people living in them homes, that are gonna have higher rates of costs and, you know, better tax dollars. I mean, I, I see, you know, no alliances, you know, except stuff that's a fallacy and made up.
Then you move there.
Excuse me, let him speak, please.
I live in the township. I grew up in the city, you know?
You live on the other side of town.
And I am the largest township landowner, against it, too.
Against.
Yeah, thank you.
Let him speak, please.
So, hey, I don't care. We need a marriage. We need something for our people. We can't have people taking their tax dollars and going to alliances.
You wanna buy my house?
You know, how's your house?
How's that gonna?
Uh, Mr. Kurzian, I have a couple of questions to ask you.
Yes.
Have you had your EPA or your soil water conservation, uh, checked at all on that property?
Not formally.
Okay.
We did because of what's going on across the street, and the engineers worked with the designs with the people, so when it does go through, that, you know, we take up enough of the land that's going to be for retention, you know, because you have to have it. There's nothing I can build that will not go through Star County. It's, it's gotta be approved, and they are going to calculate everything. You know, the only thing they can't calculate is the runoff from the neighbors. We can calculate what's happening in the city properties, because that's, that's being done, or has been.
I asked him a question. I want an answer.
So.
Short answer was no.
The other thing, um, explain to why it needs to be a B-five.
Well, because that's gonna bring in our senior housing. Without the B-five, you can't go to do a pud. And we are lacking senior housing in town immensely. And as you see with the two plans, we have one with a smaller amount of a pud, one with a larger amount of the pud. And, you know, once we do our surveys, you know, we want to see how that goes. Um, there's, when you talk to the realtors in town, there's none left. Presidents, I think, has one or two lots left. Boeshamin's sold out. We, we have no senior housing, and we have no place for seniors that wanna stay in town and live maintenance-free down.
Passer, go ahead.
Uh, have you considered maybe a B-four zoning or?
It does not do senior housing. It cuts out all the senior housing wholly.
No, I think if you get it conditioned, you can, you can run it in right there.
Uh, and you have to separate the areas, and with the way that it goes, going that route would, would kill, would kill the pud. Just fly out, kill it. So that would be straight. So the B-five, really, the only thing it allows me to do is do the puds.
I think they're concerned, a lot of people, the B-five, you will allow. I know this isn't your plan, but it will allow a service station they put in that area. It will allow.
They don't wanna come.
No, I understand. I don't think it's a good idea from that, but I think that's, these people are concerned about that.
They, you need a traffic flow. We do not have a traffic flow. And if, and if anybody did the re- actual, real research on it, you can't get a Sheetz or a Bell store. We do not have anywhere shaped traffic flow that any gas station wants to come in there. You know, I know people might be upset because of the traffic flow, but it's not because of what we did so far. I mean, the two hundred and sixty-eight homes is gonna have four or five times more traffic than what we proposed.
Do you, are you confident that we can, something could be done with the, with the name of the flooding, potential flooding, and cr- traffic problem? Is it, is there something?
The, the flooding, I think, takes care of itself, and as you see, the more that that gets developed up on sixty-two, between sixty-two feet, the less flooding that has happened. We have reduced the watering minutes, and once it starts coming across the street, and we put in our retention ponds, it's gonna take it, it's gonna reduce it that much more. I mean, if you see the plans, you see they were, you know, they're all over. There's a better chance of flooding now than just feel. Yeah, than there is.
About traffic? I mean, I don't know if traffic's gonna be.
I think our biggest traffic flow on Broadway is now, if everybody sees it, it's a cut-through from Route thirty to sixty-two. They don't know Harrison, they come around. Again, the traffic flow is a county thing. It affects us all. I understand what they're saying about that. There's a problem, but it's not gonna be a problem because of the business availability. It's gonna be more of a problem for a bigger residential development.
Is the county interested involved in taking a word with that, is there?
Yeah, I know the county is. I, I think even the township trustees have been working with the county on that as well. So they, the county is where, I think, they're, I think they're gonna be doing a, a traffic study here sometime this summer, if they're gonna do a deeper analysis of that. So they are aware.
Then the other thing we can also do, we can pull some of the taxes.
Question, question.
Is there a question out there for an answer?
Go ahead. Explain to what you said you can do, sir.
We can pull, we can tip the project. We can take some of our tax money as allocated by you guys on a percentage, and we can put that on an yearly basis for our oats and improvements. You know, there's only a small part of Peach that's, the city actually owns, or, you know, that's, you know, taken care of by the city. The rest comes into the township, and the rest goes right to the county. But we could pay, and that's up to you guys, and we could tip it. Uh, doesn't matter to me how much. I'll work with you, you know, anybody, how they wanna do it. But we could tip part of the money, and then allow money to come to the city for the improvements.
Anybody else on council that have any questions?
No, I, I didn't know if, if you by chance had sent Tiffany the, the plans, or do we have a chance to project those plans at all?
I dropped a bunch of them off. Nobody, I wasn't asked to have a PDF, but.
Okay.
I, I have a question. Uh, so the B-five, I'm still confused on the B-five versus B-four. I know your intent is to have senior housing, that's why you gotta, you gotta have the B-five, and there's no possible way to do it under a B-four. Now, my concern is, is rentals, is renting. I think we spoke before about just renting. Houses out, just renting, just like, you know, resulting door on people coming in and out of that area. That's what B-five is opening up. If I find that's what a B-five can cause.
Well, with the pud, it's not a rent. It's a, they own it. Just, when you do the pud, it, it allows the people to own, own the building. It's not a rental.
So your, your topic here is proposed condos that you had in the plans. Those.
Right, those are just like a residence. People buy it.
Those would be owner occupied, but it would be a private street.
But Redwood, right, President?
They, they're rentals. I'm not part of that.
But they didn't change it to rentals till recently, a lot of time here.
No, 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 no. And Redwood's always been rentals, yeah. Always been rentals.
You're talking about Orchard Park.
Orchard Park.
That's different, that's different. Redwood has always been, uh, rentals.
See, mine would be purchased. You know, it'd be, it'd be just like you'd a Boeshamin, you know, with the clusters, or Presidents with the single families.
I have one more question. Are you referring age-limited restricted housing facilities? That's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Because if I look here, it, you know, B-two, B-four, and B-five are all conditional. It's all the same. Am I interpreting that wrong?
You're right. Doesn't need to be B-five.
So you need to look at the residential pan unit development subject to section eleven fifty-seven twenty-two. It's right under that.
Right, that's the one that, under that.
So look across, see how B-five, it's still conditional for B-five. It's gonna have to have conditional use still, yes. But there's nothing under B-four, B, you can't do it in a B-four, B-three, B-two.
What is age-limit restricted housing facilities? What are those, the one above it?
Those are like over by Stone Ridge, those condos. Those are, those are age-restricted. I don't, I, I don't know what they.
I mean, what's the difference then?
Declaration ponds is also, it's aged. You have to be a certain age to get on there, too. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Kurzian, one thing, uh, concern that residents have brought.
Mr. Kurzian, one thing, concern that residents had brought up last meeting was the senior housing kind of budding up to the edge of the property in the one plan. Would it be any problem if these plans move forward of having that more centrally located with the condos more on the edge so that you didn't have like a height disparity between the ranches beside with the condos to give a little bit more privacy?
Right, somebody asked me that. I have no problems. I have no problem with how we categorize it, how it goes, you know. Uh, I really don't. You know, so if we want to move them around and work with people, you know, I have no issue with that. Uh, we had to start with something, you know, and so you start with something and then you move. And then, you know, once we get in, when we go further, we've got to see how our, our water's going to go. And then we'll be able to do it. But no, I would have no problem with running out against that and flopping it, pushing that down. That's, doesn't affect anything. We just needed to begin to give a concept. And that's what that is, is a concept.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move along to ordinance number twenty-three, Dave seventeen.
Being an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement and execute all documents necessary with S U T N for the Nickel Plate and East Main Street Intersection Improvements Project.
I'll make a motion. We bring ordinance number twenty-three dash seventeen to the table for its second reading by emergency.
I don't think we need a discussion unless you have anything more you want to tell us, Dan, about it.
Nope.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote then.
Taylor?
Yes.
Al Jansen?
Yes.
Ballack?
Yes.
Slackford?
Yes.
Street?
Yes.
Make a motion that we suspend the rules to adopt ordinance number twenty-three seventeen by emergency.
Second.
Vote.
Taylor?
Yes.
Al Jansen?
Yes.
Ballack?
Yes.
Slackford?
Yes.
Street?
Yes.
Please read again, Tiffany.
Being an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement and execute all documents necessary with S U T N for the Nickel Plate and East Main Street Intersection Improvements Project.
Make a motion. We bring ordinance number twenty-three dash seventeen to the table for its second reading by emergency.
Second.
It already was, I'm sorry. That was the second and the suspension, so it's passed.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, sorry.
So I'll declare ordinance number twenty-three seventeen duly passed and enacted. Okay, that's good. Okay, let's move along to ordinance number twenty-three, Dave eighteen.
Being an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Omnipro Services for the construction management and inspection services for the Nickel Plate and East Main Street Intersection Improvements Project.
Make a motion. We bring ordinance number twenty-three dash eighteen to the table for its second reading by emergency.
Second.
Let's go ahead and vote, because we discussed this at the last meeting. Okay, let's go ahead.
Taylor?
Yes.
Al Jansen?
Yes.
Ballack?
Yes.
Slackford?
Yes.
Street?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules to adopt ordinance number twenty-three, Dave eighteen for the second reading of them by emergency.
Second.
Go ahead and vote.
Taylor?
Yes.
Al Jansen?
Yes.
Ballack?
Yes.
Slackford?
Yes.
Street?
Yes.
I'll declare ordinance number twenty-three, Dave eighteen duly passed and enacted. Move along to ordinance number twenty-three, Dave twenty-two.
Being an ordinance authorizing the city manager to provide a notice of award and enter into a contract along with executing all necessary documents for the twenty-twenty-three annual asphalt pavement replacement program, road materials installed with the North Star asphalt.
We'll make a motion. We bring ordinance number twenty-three, dash twenty-two to the table for its first reading.
Second.
Okay, let's have an explanation, please.
Yeah, I'll have Dan talk in more detail about this, but this is just the annual asphalt paving. North Star was the lowest and best bid.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Dan. Speak into the microphone.
Hi, yeah, Congress, this is the annual asphalt paving program. Um, council budgeted about five hundred thousand for our annual program, which also includes um, street striping, um, as well as twenty-five thou- or I'm sorry, fifty thousand for concrete roads. So roughly around four, four and a quarter right now where we're, um, with paving asphalt this year.
Where are some of the, um, concrete streets at?
Uh, the concrete roads are the ones up in, um, off of Byer Avenue, Joel, in that area.
We still have some of those to do?
Yeah, we're still working on those, yes.
And what we have to do, infrastructure underneath of them also?
Um, not right now.
Okay.
Did we use North Star last year?
No, it was Shelley Company last year, so we use.
Okay, that's it. But have we used North Star?
Um, it's, it's been a little while since, uh, North Star's been here. Um, they got the, um, Budat paving project from forty-four this year, which should go middle to end of July in that area. So it was, it made a little sense to hit this project hard.
Sure.
So, um, there was discussion, uh, earlier this, or I'm sorry, at the budget season, if council wanted to, I guess, uh, set aside additional funds for this project. Um, is that something that, is council would like to move forward with or how would they like to proceed?
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, that's something that, uh, you know, as Dan mentioned, we had about five hundred thousand. It was kind of dedicated for the streets, but, uh, uh, some of it got eaten up with the concrete and the striping, but just to top it up a little bit, I know, you know, just in speaking with you all in the past and even through our strategic planning session, uh, paving the roads is obviously a top priority. Um, so if the, if the opportunity, and actually the opportunity has kind of presented itself, so we have some additional dollars that I would personally recommend, uh, to kind of bump up the paving. If you guys would entertain that, we could come back to you at the next meeting and, uh, it was a number.
My only problem with it, the more money we get in there, the more streets we can pave and it'll keep people happy.
Do we get a list, not like we do?
Yeah, we'll, um, after, um, a number is decided, what we'll do is I'll bring together a proposed list. Right now, we're looking at about twenty-five to thirty streets, um, based on large or how large the roads are, uh, and any type of issues that we might arise with some base or base problems and address.
Yeah, go ahead. Sonny, how, how much above our target are we current in our, in our general fund? I mean, we're at a, we want a twenty percent target. That's where we have it set right now?
Right, over projected revenues. That's how that's computed and it should be basically, um, one point two seven is our twenty percent based on projected general fund revenues for the year.
So, right now, we're at-
Yeah, what are we at now?
If you go to your fund balance page, we're at one point eight nine seven.
One?
One point eight nine seven.
What page?
To your fund balance page.
That's about six hundred and twenty thousand.
So, if, if I can, included in this project is also the paving and the striping of the enlargement of, um, um, best for part, um, we would ask for additional funds to cover the, the additional costs of the project as well.
Do you know what that?
Uh, it would be, um, forty thousand dollars.
And did, Tom, did you say we're at four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars now approximately towards paving?
Correct, correct. Towards the actual asphalt.
I, I mean, I'd be okay with another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That, that bumps us up to about five fifty. Still get, still keep us about a half million dollars above our target.
I don't have a problem with that.
The more streets, the better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can afford that.
So I'm, I'm okay, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars additional?
Yeah, I'd be happy to bring that back to the next council meeting.
Okay.
Um, when you look at that, that, that paving there and with all the paving that's already been, since spent, it's going to happen on forty-four and one fifty-three, you're going to, you're going to see a lot of paving going on in Louisville this year, which is, uh, really what we want. It's a great thing.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Taylor?
Yes.
Al Jansen?
Yes.
Ballack?
Yes.
Slackford?
Yes.
Street?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move along to resolution twenty, twenty-three.
Being a resolution adopting the continuation of the community reinvestment area agreements within the city of Louisville.
Make a motion. We adopt resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-three.
Second. Second.
Hey, Tom, do you want to-
Yeah, these are, yeah, this will be the continuation of, uh, of two CRA agreements we have in the city. Uh, the boat downtown, one is Three Hops, the other is Historic Shilling. Uh, the Three Hops is the, is unhitched brewery. And basically, they have, uh, exceeded their expectations for the original CRA agreement as far as job amount and also payroll. They've almost doubled the payroll that they originally, uh, estimated along with the, the jobs continues to grow at that facility. So, uh, this is something that we've already reported back to the state, so they meet all the qualifications, so we would ask for a continuation on that. Um, the other one, the second one is, uh, is on, is Historic Shilling. It's on Main Street as well. Uh, it's a property that Mr. Kuhn owns. Uh, it just hasn't started yet. So, uh, there's no, no incentive is in place. There's no payment. It's, it's occurring right now. It's just, the project hasn't occurred. So we continue if, if, or when he does start it, it would be something we'd have to come back to you as far as, uh, uh, adjusting the, the dates at that time, but right now, that's, uh, it's just in my book.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Taylor?
Yes.
Al Jansen?
Yes.
Ballack?
Yes.
Slackford?
Yes.
Street?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to take ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-six from the table.
Second.
Go ahead and vote.
Taylor?
Yes.
Al Jansen?
Yes.
Ballack?
Yes.
Slackford?
Yes.
Street?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and I'll ask you to please read the ordinance again, Tiffany, number twenty-three dash zero-six.
Being an ordinance permitting the batteries of this normal distance is provided by ordinance number seventy-nine thirty-three whereby changing the lands described herein from R-one, single-family, low-density suburban residential district to B-five, general retail office and motorist services business district.
We'll make a motion. We adopt ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-six.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
May I just, it's actually a second reading?
This is the second read. Go ahead, vote.
Taylor?
Yes.
Al Jansen?
No.
Ballack?
No.
Slackford?
Yes.
Street?
Yes.
I'll declare ordinance number twenty-three, dash zero-six duly passed and enacted.
Oh!
Yep. See on the ballot box. Hope you like your seats now. Pathetic.
I'll suggest to you all that should have had Mr. Kurzian in here last month, like you did when Redwood, Mr. Kurzio, uh, proposed that they were neighborhood. Then he's came and faced people from the town.
A rat. Faced all the questions.
Shame on you.
He missed it all.
Shame on you. Disgusting, wasting your life.